Good evening, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March nineteenth. Call it to order. Tammy, could you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Labonte.
Here.
Commissioner Pat Smith. Commissioner Mercero.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Present. Let's do the flag salute. Everyone ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our consent agenda, all items, let me see, are enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a commission member or person in the audience requests specific items be removed from the consent agenda for discussion prior to the time the commission votes on the motion to adopt the consent agenda. Okay, do we have anyone that wants to make a motion for the approval of the February twentieth meeting minutes?
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Wees made the motion to accept the meeting minutes and it was seconded by Commissioner Volbada. Can we have a roll call vote, Tammy?
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. Okay, so the meeting minutes have been approved. Excuse me. On our regular agenda tonight, item number, excuse me, item number two is the monthly planning report. And then number three is a public hearing regarding file CU dash twenty-four dash zero one, the river intake pump station. And item number four has been rescheduled, that's public hearing DR dash twenty-four dash zero one. The expansion of existing IC SB building has been postponed until April sixteenth. So.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Take it away with the February planning report. So in February, we had our typical number of, I'd say tasks to do, maybe slightly smaller on customer service that month. We have instituted a website that has basic planning information, so what your property setbacks are, how to build an ADU, other basic questions about where to find information in the code. And I think it is helping reduce some of the phone calls and emails that we're fielding on a daily basis to folks, especially like, how do you build a deck? But we're getting a lot of those in this beautiful weather and fence information. So we're trying to be a bit more efficient with the time we spend doing customer service, so guiding people to the website has been helpful to us. As far as decisions made in the month of February, we did see the home occupation language get approved by the city council, excuse me, that was in March. But I just wanted to give you that update. There were a couple of revisions to language that we emailed out to you, so you'd all be aware of them. One was related to family childcare homes that are protected by state law as being allowed in residential zones without a home occupation permit. And then the city attorney went through and just used a toothbrush on all of the language and made it just a little more clear all the way throughout. And so the planning, the city council approved it. The one thing they did change is they decided to notify property owner neighbor residents within two hundred feet rather than one hundred feet of every home occupation. So it just made that radius a little bit bigger, but otherwise they adopted the language as you saw in the most recent email coordination. We had a couple of pre-application conferences and we haven't seen applications on any of those yet. The only other application we have in the queue besides the one you're hearing this evening is that IC SB project. So there's a little bit of a lull right now in current planning, which is great because, as we'll talk about later, the Gladstone Town Center Stakeholder Advisory Committee kicked off this week, so we're starting work on that in earnest. And we'll be talking more about that and parking in the coming months. Any questions about that report?
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Mercero, do you have any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our public hearing. File CU dash two four zero one, River Intake Pump Station. It's a manual transfer switch and docking station to allow trailer mounted generators to be connected to the facility in emergency situations, which is located at one zero five East Clackamas Boulevard. And it's for the cities of Lake Oswego and Tigard. So I'd like to open the public hearing at this time at six thirty-five. And Steph, you want to go ahead with your report, or do you want me to read?
Yes, please.
Okay. Now, does any commission member wish to disqualify him or herself for any personal or financial interest in the matter before us tonight? Or any ex parte? I'll start down with Commissioner Volbada.
No ex parte contact.
Okay.
No concerns here.
Yep, no ex parte contact. I haven't been to the site either.
Commissioner Labonte?
No ex parte contact.
Commissioner Mercero.
No contact for me.
Okay. Okay. Have any of you visited the site?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Wees, have you visited the site?
I have been by the site many times in the past, not specifically in relation to this.
I didn't go by the site. I have been by the site, yes.
Commissioner Mercero, have you been by the site in the past?
I haven't been recently.
Okay, thank you very much. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commission member to hear this matter? That would be no. I myself have no ex parte connection. I have been by the site several times. Is there any member of the audience who issues to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of the city council on this matter? That's a no. Okay, Oregon land use laws require that all issues be raised if the issues are to be appealed. Failure to raise the issues at this hearing may invalidate their further their further appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. Any party has the right to request a continuance to this hearing or in the alternative to have the record left open for seven days. Failure to raise conditional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issues will preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. If you're going to testify, please try to address the applicable criteria. Will the staff please present the report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. We're gonna pull up a PowerPoint, a brief PowerPoint presentation. Okay, so as you mentioned, this is agenda item number three, conditional use twenty-four dash zero one for the River Intake Pump Station or RIPS Electrical Docking Station Conditional Use. The proposal is to add a manual transfer switch and docking station, which looks like exterior electrical equipment near existing electrical equipment on the northwest corner of the property. This would allow Lake Oswego Public Works staff to connect temporary as-needed trailer-mounted generators to this existing facility during times where there's no power. So this did occur during the storm Presidents' Day of 2021, where the system did not have power to this site. So it was an emergency situation that the city of Lake Oswego staff were not able to provide backup power to. So they want to make sure that going forward, they're able to do that. And getting approval now would allow them to put something in place in time for next year's storm cycles. The address is at one oh five East Clackamas Boulevard. Zoning is open space and property size is just under point three acres. This is a conditional use permit, and that is because it's in Habitat Conservation Area District within that open space zone that is required of any utilities that you do that. And then there's also a construction management plan included in the packet, and that's required because of the location in the Habitat Conservation Area District if a building permit or grading permit is required. The applicant's not positive yet if that's going to be required from Clackamas County. There's a couple scenarios where it may or may not be. So they wanted to make sure that they checked off all their obligations to the city of Gladstone, just in case. But that condition, that construction management plan is part of the application now and is just good management of their construction, so will be conditioned to be part of the application since it's in there. This is also, the part of the property is in the flood management area district. However, where they are proposing to add this system, there is not floodplain located at that elevation. So it's quite a bit higher than the floodplain elevation, so we did not need to process a flood management permit as well. The property is owned jointly by cities of Lake Oswego and Tigard and maintained by Lake Oswego Public Works Department. So here's just a view of where this is located on the site. The blue area is the new equipment. It's sort of in the northwest corner tucked in just a bit. The large area, let's see, I have a pointer. Well, in the, it doesn't work. In the bottom right corner is the existing large structure on the property. And then where this blue, these blue polygons are being added is where the electrical cabinets are. And it looks like this. So this is a little dark, but there are electrical cabinets that are all existing. But what's being shown within that yellow box is what's being added. So this is looking as if you were at the street looking into the property. So you would see the existing electrical cabinets, and this would just be additional electrical cabinets. On the far right is the cabinet detail. It's pretty standard electrical cabinet. And then the, in the case that the electricity is needed, a temporary generator on a trailer would be brought in. And there's a couple of locations that it could be located on the site, but the closest to the property line is this location right near the facility. Depending on the size, and the applicant has more information on this, but they may be able to tuck it even further into the site. And the reason we were interested in that was just making sure that the noise of the generator wasn't impactful to the neighbors. So we did ask the applicant to look into that. Gladstone Municipal Code eight point one two is our noise ordinance. It does exempt emergency situations, so this does fall into the exemption. But the applicant was great in responding and looking up that information, providing it so that we would have some level of certainty that this wouldn't be something that residents would find overly impactful. So the twenty-seven feet away from this thing, it's gonna be at seventy-two decibels, which is just a little over a normal conversation. The nearest property is actually more like a hundred and twenty feet, I believe, per the applicant's measurements. I was just doing a PDF measurement, but, so I think noise will not be an issue here. We don't really have a code requirement for it, but I think we will be able to say with certainty that it won't be impactful of residents for the short amounts of time that that will be on site. Just to look at the hundred-year floodplain, I just wanted to make it clear that where that dashed line that the arrow is pointing to, that's the hundred-year flood elevation. And then where this cabinet is occurring is further up from there where there's a three sort of pointing toward it. I should have circled it better on this. But yeah, up in the upper right corner is where the electrical equipment occurs, far out of the hundred-year floodplain. So with that, we do recommend approval of this conditional use and construction management plan with the condition of approval that the construction management plan be followed throughout the development of these electrical cabinets on the site. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there currently concrete pads where these new boxes will be sitting?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I thought that there, my apologies. Let's ask the applicant that. I was thinking that there were.
Yeah, because I want to also know how the generators are powered with gas or diesel.
So new concrete pad extension, that's, I think that's where I assumed that it's extending from a concrete pad.
Okay.
So we'll ask the applicant for more clarification on that.
Perfect. Commissioners, do you have any questions for City Planner?
I do. So you mentioned, we're not sure if a grading permit's required yet. If it turns out it is needed, does that add any additional requirements or recommendations that we would need to follow through on?
If we hadn't gotten a construction management plan submitted and a grading permit came across our desk to review, we'd have to then have them apply for a construction management plan, so that is the requirement in the case that they need one.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes.
I guess my question would be, I know this for emergency and probably short term, but is there a scenario where the generator is out there for an extended period of time where it could become a nuisance in other ways?
That is not what this application is approving. This application is approving the equipment only, not a generator being a permanent addition to the site. So if that, or the battery, I guess, the charging part, if that did become the case that month after month we're seeing it there, we would say, hey, you didn't get your design review for that addition to the site. So that would at that point trigger us to reach out to the applicant, but this is only approving permanent installation of the electrical equipment and temporary emergency-only generator use.
I guess, just said in a different way, if they were to park a trailer generator out there within our code, do we have the right to ask them to remove that?
Yeah, if it became, so our code requires that any addition to a site in this zone, in this Habitat Conservation Area requires this type of conditional use review. So if that was the case, you know, hey, the power's back on, it's been two weeks, like, what are you doing here? But I don't anticipate that, this being the Lake Oswego Public Works Department, I don't anticipate that being an issue.
Any further questions?
One more. You mentioned that on the slide where it mentions the noise, it referenced the generator cut sheet. I did not even see that included in our documents.
Oh, okay. Let me.
I didn't either, so thank you. Good point.
I thought it was in the applicant's middle, but let me take a look and pull that up and get that. I think I didn't include that, Tammy. I don't think that was something, if that was missed, it was missed on my end. So let me pull it up and see if I can get it emailed out.
Commissioner Mercero, do you have any questions for our city?
I have no question, thank you.
Okay. You want to continue to look that up while I go on to the next?
That would be great, thank you.
You're welcome. Is the applicant or his representative present? If you wish to add any of the staff report, please give your name and address for the record, and let's go. Push the button. There you go. Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for being out on such a beautiful summer day, spring day. But that's too, she'll change. My name is Eric Eisman, the last name is spelled E-I-S-E-M-A-N-N. I have a small company called E Squared Land Use Planning. My address is twenty-five fifty-four Northeast Forty-eighth Avenue, Portland nine seven two one three. I will introduce some other folks with me here a little bit later on. I just have to say as an aside, it's really nice to be in this room. I was a part of the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve project that remodeled what we call the RIPS station. And this is a much more welcoming room than the former room was. So it's quite a nice change. First of all, before I go into any detail, I'd like to thank staff, Heather Austin, for the work that she's done on this. She's been very collaborative. She's answered our questions in a timely manner, and her response has been just excellent. It was through talking with her early on about the concern that we had about noise that she suggested that we might want to provide some additional information, even though it's not required because the generator is an emergency use and it's exempt from your noise code. But we did that, and we can talk a little bit more about that, but that was really useful on her part. We've had a good collaboration, good back and forth. And I just want to say that we really don't have anything of new substance to add to the staff report or to our application materials. You will find in the applicant's material, there was a cut sheet that was submitted, so you might have seen that for the transformer cabinets. And so we don't really have anything additional to say about the substance, but we're very happy to answer questions. And that's why I brought with me several folks to help you with answering your questions. They'll come up as needed, they'll introduce themselves and their addresses, but we have Mr. Daniel Payne, who is a project manager for the Public Oswego Public Works Department. Stephen Brodus, who is assistant city engineer in Lake Oswego. We have Brett Beanerth, who is the water treatment plant manager. And also with me is Kelly Kimball with Brown and Caldwell Contractors, who is the design builder behind this. And Brown and Caldwell was behind the original RIPS restoration or reconstruction project back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. There were a couple of questions that came up during your review here. Be happy to start with them right now, if you'd like.
I'll go ahead and go with the two that I had regarding needing concrete slab for the new as well as how are the generators, if the emergency is required, how are they powered with diesel, gas?
Both good questions. I'd like to bring Kelly up and have him address.
And then commissioners, if you have any other questions, let's go ahead and do that now.
Hello. Kelly Kimball with Brown and Caldwell Constructors, sixty-five hundred South McAdam Avenue, Portland, Oregon. So we can address the first question, which was concrete pad. So the yellow highlights in the box, the cabinet that's closest to you in that drawing, we have to pour a concrete extension to the existing cabinet in order to allow electrical conduits and cables and infrastructure to get installed there, as well as a cabinet in the back is new, and we would have to do a small concrete pad there as well.
Total square footage is around fifty.
Yeah, total square footage is pretty small. I think total with everything shown in that yellow box is about eighty square feet, maybe ninety, somewhere in those lines.
Well, counting, just if I may, the raceways between the two cabinets are extended above over the ground, so they don't actually have it. They're about thirty square feet, if I remember, and they don't actually have a ground impact.
We tried to limit the amount of disturbance and above-ground assets to a minimum.
And these concrete slabs, are they going to be basically kind of approaching the already paved asphalt, or are they gonna be?
They're behind, well, they're behind the paved asphalt in a landscape area currently that has trees and shrubs that were part of the landscaping plan as part of the two thousand thirteen project. So our intent is to return those to existing conditions.
Okay, and how will the generators be powered?
Yeah, so those are, the generator that's shown here is the worst-case scenario, essentially the largest generator that Lake Oswego may be able to procure to power the facility, and it's powered with diesel.
Because it's in a natural habitat, is there any issues with how it's going to be powered?
There's nothing in the code that would address that, so we would assume, though, that these will be subject to environmental standards when they're constructed and when they're operated, and so we would rely on those standards that apply.
Is that an accurate statement?
It is.
Okay. Commissioners?
I'm not familiar with the truck-mounted generators. Where do those exhaust, at the back, at the front side?
Yeah, so it typically, yes, they typically intake through the front plenum wall and exhaust through the back, the back wall, and so they're pulling air across the generators to keep it cool.
Right.
And I think that's the air intake. I think the actual engine exhaust is out the top.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Jennifer, do you have any questions?
Where are these being housed when they're not in use?
Yeah, and this kind of relates to some of the other questions that were asked related to noise. Currently, Lake Oswego Tiger Partnership planned to rent the generators on an as-needed basis, and they're not planning to procure them as part of this contract, only to install the permanent infrastructure that we're showing here. So, yeah.
Great, thanks.
If I may, just respond to Commissioner Volbada's question about the cut sheet. What is shown on cabinet details on the far right of your screen is cut out of the cut sheet as the applicable cabinet. So the rest of the cut sheet is different cabinets that are not being installed. My apologies for not giving you the whole cut sheet. I was just giving you the pertinent part. Next time I will make sure it all goes in.
Sorry, this is the cabinet or the generator?
The cabinet. I don't have a cut sheet for the generator.
All right, yeah, we have the cabinet in our.
Yeah, okay. But I think that makes sense because we're not approving anything having to do with the generator.
Right. And we don't even know exactly which generator, and it could be different. You know, one time it could be one generator and another time a different one's available.
Do you really need that much power to run that?
Not as much as shown there, but that's the largest rental unit that's provided by typical distributors. Obviously, if a smaller unit is available, Lake Oswego Tiger would procure the smallest unit.
Was there any consideration to, you hear a lot about these GenRec systems that are, I mean, there's some of it above, but it's underground and it's powered by natural gas. Did you guys consider those at all, or? Yeah, it is permanent.
Yeah, we considered a wide variety. We considered about six or seven alternatives at this site. And due to construction considerations, impacts to community and costs for the project, having a permanent-type solution there was not the best fit, considering the objectives.
Commissioner Mercero, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No questions for the applicants.
Okay.
If I may, definitely. I know the, from what I recall, the project was kind of originally intended to have a residential feel. I believe that was kind of a part of the arrangement. Do we feel like this improvement is kind of staying true to that aesthetic?
If I, I'll go on that. You want to go?
No, go ahead.
I was involved with the West Pump Station project on Clackamas Boulevard. That project came before you a couple of years ago, I think, two thousand twenty-two, if I'm not mistaken. That was specifically designed when it was built for residential use. What we did in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, and then thirteen with the Habitat application is we tried to find a way to minimize sort of the industrial look of this pump station by adding the cut stone block faces, by adding the ornamental gate in front of it to screen the utility behind it, but the railings that were more natural railings. So I wouldn't say that this was designed with a residential palette in mind, but what we are trying to do is tuck these permanent structures into the existing cabinet location where PGE has their cabinets already. And so we're not trying to add a visual component that's any more incongruent with the residential area there. But again, this is in an open space zone, too. The residences are to the west, across the trolley area, and then to the north across Clackamas Boulevard there. So that's a long-winded way of saying, of trying to answer your question.
So, kind of.
Yeah, yeah, it's really difficult to put, say, for example, a mansored roof or something on an electrical panel. From what I understand from Kelly, and he can comment on this, there are requirements that the electrical utilities have in terms of clear space around them so that they can get access to their cabinets. And I think this is something similar here.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Try to preserve the current aesthetics as much as possible, but I mean, the National Electric Code and as well as PGE's requirements for clearance around their.
Well, commissioners, any more questions of the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now's the time for public testimony. Do we have any?
I have not received any requests.
Okay, and we don't have any in the audience either, so.
We have one that just raised their hand.
Okay.
Angela Holt, and I will allow Angela to speak.
Thank you.
Angela, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for allowing me to testify via Zoom. And thank you for sending the letter. Unfortunately, I just received it today. It was delivered to a neighbor's house instead, and they gave it to me today, so I'm playing a little catch-up. I live next door to the station at one one five West Clackamas Boulevard. I appreciate. I appreciate the thorough information. I appreciate the update. Again, this is the first that we've heard of this. I do feel that it has the certainly has the potential to impact us. I I appreciate the need for this. I appreciate the need, especially during inclement weather and inclement weather events to ensure that the station remains operational. I am uncomfortable with some of the language or the commitments that appear a little squishy to me in terms of minimizing the noise. I would like to see some kind of guarantees or enforcement around that. I am concerned about exhaust. It seems that that some generators might push the exhaust upward. The generation, the generators seem to maybe vary in size since they appear to not have yet been procured. So those are some concerns that I have or that we have, since our home sits right there. You know, if if the weather is such that a generator is required, then one would assume that we would be homebound and stuck here. So if the noise is at a level that is intrusive and the exhaust becomes intrusive, since cold air tends to push those things downward. And our house is multiple levels. And so even when diesel trucks sit out here at the stop sign, sometimes that exhaust actually gets pushed down to the lower level of our home. So something like this would be even more extensive. I appreciate that it is difficult to mitigate the aesthetic of things like this. One would hope that the city of Lake Oswego, given all the beautiful art that they have in their city, could possibly come up with some kind of a solution that would meet code requirements and maximize access while at the same time minimizing, again, any kind of oh, something that looks unpleasant, since this is a residential neighborhood. And finally, I would just say, I would request that that you do all you can since, you know, our goal here is to protect the habitat in this area. I thought I heard someone say that there would be trees or shrubbery or greenery that would be perhaps replanted. It sounds like maybe some of those came out and those would be replanted. I think that would be fantastic and would certainly help mitigate the addition of the equipment that's going in here. So I will stop. I really appreciate your time in hearing me. I appreciate the letter that was sent. I I wish I had received it sooner, but that's not your fault. That's unfortunately, it just went to the neighbor who walked it over today. So and thank you again for letting me comment via Zoom.
Thank you very much for your input. Would you like to come and address those questions? Applicant rebuttal, to be technical.
Again, for the record, I'm Eric Iseman.
Kelly Kimball.
We could start with the, from the bottom of the list and work my way up, if that's okay. The first, at the end of the was a question about protecting the habitat.
Could you speak more closer into the mic so that they get a good recording? Thank you very much.
At the end of the testimony, which was very well thought out and spoken, there's a comment about protecting habitat. So Kelly has a comment, I think, about that.
I think currently we are not disturbing any of the local shrubbery that's in that area that has a fair amount of bark dust or bark chips. But if through the course of construction or activities, our intent is to return that to existing condition. So if we remove a shrub, we can relocate it to a different area. Part two is, I don't think that this street view shows a great, this drawing at least shows a great idea of what that street view looks like. It's actually pretty heavily wooded. There is a tree in the middle of the island, another one that's a little bit further up off the drying. And then there's some trees coming over from the trolley parcel of land as well. So it's a little bit more shrouded and kind of contained.
I think they're trying to look for a street view, but yes.
I don't believe we have a street view, but at least the aerial on the first slide has the landscaping.
Oh, the one that passed was good, right there.
That or there's even a zoomed in one on the very first page. I did an aerial for the title slide.
Yeah, there we go. So that's actually, it's going to be around where those trees are right there. Okay.
It'll be, I would, I guess we would say be under the trees. Those trees would not be removed as part of this project.
Okay, so you don't plan on removing any vegetation at all?
There may be some small shrubs through the course of construction activities, but if so, we plan to replant or return those to existing conditions.
Okay, now while we had this beautiful view, if there were generator, if there was an emergency and you needed generators, where would they be parked in the parking spaces there?
So the worst, kind of started to speak to this earlier. If you see where the silver car is, it would be parked parallel, essentially through those parking spots. That's the worst case scenario. The actual desire for the Lake Oswego Tiger Partnership is to procure a generator that's not the largest one needed and to actually park it on the bridge structure. Because that is behind a locked, closed security gate and has site security and other elements that the city's looking for. So for all intents and purposes, that seems to be the intent for generator procurement. But we wanted to be transparent about what the worst case scenario could be.
Okay, and appreciate that. Have you had any issues with vandalism with the existing boxes that are present? Already, has there been any issues with vandalism or?
So Brett Bean Earth, City of Lake Oswego, the Water Treatment Plant Manager. Address forty-two sixty Ken Thorpe Way in West Lynn. So vandalism, we've had some very minor pegs, which we got cleaned up right away. A couple of square feet. So that's it.
No one's tried to break into the cabinets or anything?
No, no, there's been no, we have heavy duty locks on them and nobody's breaking in.
Does anyone else have any? Go ahead.
Well, I don't know if there's so much a question for them or for staff, but if I can just throw it out. Is this project in any, there's some talk of Gladstone perhaps having a pedestrian bridge in that area. And sometime in the future, does this project in any way hinder that?
That's a great question. That was City Administrator Betts's first question when this came through as a pre-app. And so we determined that it does not impact that at all. This stays entirely on this property. The trolley trail bridge replacement would be on the next property over and would be able to be fully connected with this in place. This this would be located amongst other electrical equipment that's already existing, so we'd already have to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Andrew.
No, I was just saying, I want to make sure we address Angela's all her questions.
Right, okay.
Exhaust.
Oh. As I mentioned earlier, the exhaust, the the actual distance, I believe, to the nearest property line or resident. Let me let me re-say to the nearest resident is around a hundred, hundred foot or so. And then I think to the next nearest residence, about a hundred and twenty-five feet. As I explained earlier, air intake comes in through the front of those units and out through the back. And the exhaust is usually through the top of those enclosures. I can't really speak to impacts related to potential, you know, wind patterns and with the exhaust coming out and what those potential impacts could be.
Since this is a concern of folks, is there some noise mitigation that can be kind of put in here in some way in that situation? Just from the public's viewpoint?
Yeah, that that was one of standard, most of these generators are almost exclusively, all of these generator sets are manufactured to a certain standard. They come with one type of noise mitigation, which is seventy-two dB at twenty-seven feet, which is essentially one of the slides that Heather shared. And they usually come with, you know, a tier two or tier four type exhaust system that's kind of integral to that unit and that box. So it's pretty standard manufacturing methods that are used with not a lot of customization offered for trailer mounted temporary generator set type systems.
Understanding these aren't the normal type generators that you put outside of your garage that make an awful lot of noise. These are commercial grade, I understand that. By any chance, do they have an additional filter for the exhaust? Is that something you guys looked into or?
I I don't believe that's an offering of the standard trailer mounted gen sets. Our our research and investigation related to the amount of customization that was possible for these trailer mounted temporary units was rather limited, especially on the size and scale that we're talking to power the river intake pump station.
Any other questions, commissioners? You don't have any?
I just have one final final comment, if I may. I'd just like to reiterate what Heather mentioned earlier, and that is our application is for conditional use for two for electrical panels, basically. The use of these panels will only occur in an emergency situation, which means the generators will only come in an emergency. The last one was in February of 2021. We didn't have a ice storm this year. I don't know what's going to happen next year. So we don't really know, but I just want to keep our attention focused on what the application and what the applicable criteria are. And we'll do our best to not be squishy.
I know the one that we had in twenty-one was, I was without power for seven days. So that's why we're, I don't think we're being nitpicky, but we're we're looking at all options, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Smith, before the applicant leaves, I would like to just offer a thought that the conditional use criteria do allow us to add conditions related to noise and fumes and things like that. So I think it's in line with what the applicant is already hoping to do, but we could consider a condition that requires that they make an effort to first procure the smallest possible generator that works for this system. So we condition that. And so our neighbors and residents know that we heard that and made that a condition of this. But that if, you know, in an emergency situation, that's not available, they do have the option to do it. But we're requiring they first try to get the smallest, less impactful as a condition.
I'm really okay with that. What about the rest of you? I would also love it if you could inquire to find out if there's a filter for it, because I don't want the the residents to be.
To to their question of the the size. So I'm guessing that the larger the unit, the more fuel is is being, and that might be then a plus to having a larger unit there from maybe your perspective. I'm not sure how, so. Let's play, so yeah, let's play out a scenario. There's a three day power outage there. What does that, what's that look like?
Typical units have a maximum of a twenty-four hour fuel supply onboard. I think that's a standard size based on the size of the unit. So if you have a smaller generator, you just have a smaller tank, it's a twenty-four hour supply. So if you were out for three days, the unit would be running continuously. Depending on the time of year, if it's winter time and non-peak flows, the the system operates a little bit differently than at high water needs times, like during the summer. So there would be probably fuel deliveries once a day to fill that unit and to continue to power it.
And that's regardless of the the size ultimately.
Yeah, it's it's kind of independent. Like I said, the usual unit has a twenty-four hour fuel tank with their with their rental units. But again, the the intent by Lake Oswego is to procure the smallest generator possible. Because one, from a basic perspective, it's a cost to them every day that they rent it. So they want to be economical with the funds that they use. And two is first opportunity and desire is to procure the smallest generator and put that said generator on the bridge, which would put it further away from residents and and probably limit additional impacts. Whether it's fumes or noise.
Great.
And we're talking about the walking bridge that's down.
The one that's shown attached to the water intake system here.
Okay.
It, yeah, it's a it's a bridge structure essentially from the land out to the ramps, which is kind of floating above the, well, it's above the river.
So that would be the ideal situation from your perspective is to park a smaller one behind that gate. And that's that that would be great. Okay, awesome.
Well, I mean, best case scenarios, we don't need it. We don't need a generator at all, but yeah, yeah.
Chair Smith, Angela Holt does have her hand raised again in case you wanted to entertain that.
Please feel free to speak right now or ask any questions.
Oh, shoot. Am I unmuted?
You're here.
You're unmuted.
Okay, lovely. It was it was muted. I just want to say thank you and thank you for this photo, the aerial photo. And when you showed where the car was parked, that was incredibly helpful in terms of positioning and then knowing that it, you know, optimally that will be placed on the bridge was also really helpful. So I just wanted to say thank you for thoughtfully answering all of my questions. And also thank you to the commissioners for your service. And again, thank you again for making this available online. So really appreciate all of you and appreciate you listening and and all of your responses. So have a lovely evening.
Thank you very much for your input. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
If there's no further testimony, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, you may.
Does the RIPS facility get prioritize power restoration in an emergency?
It's a central public service.
It is an essential public service as deemed by PGE.
We, I I realize you can't answer on behalf of PG, that's totally fine, but it it sounds like there is some advocacy that can be done in a situation.
So once again, Brett Bean Earth, Water Treatment Plant during the 2021 emergency. We had the whole substations that were without power by PGE. This particular station has two different substations that feed it. One of the substations that feed it feeds it also feeds other river intake pump stations on the river. So this was out of all of the substations that PGE had out, this was number two on their list, right behind some large hospitals that needed to get supplied. So we were prioritized. We were still without power to either of our substations for that seven days. So.
Yes, it was not pleasant.
Since we we got you, can I ask a question? I just, when he was explaining things, it made a thought in my head. So how and what is the order of this particular substation? Like what it, where is it at in your guys' need of 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 service?
So without power here at the river, I cannot run my plant in West Lynn. And then that means all of Lake Oswego and Tiger, the hundred thousand people don't have water. So it's this, this facility and then our plant in West Lynn, which has a similar to substation feed. They're both equally important. I can't run one without the other.
Okay.
I, this gets the water from the river. And then at the treatment plant, I treat it, but I can't do it. I can't run the treatment plant without the water coming into me.
Yeah, I guess I was kind of curious because there was kind of a kind of brought up a scenario with water demand. So it made it, made me think this one kind of is supplementing any kind of lack that might.
This is the only source of water for Lake Oswego and Tiger. This is, this is it.
Okay.
There must be some wells and things along those.
There's some very small wells and aquifers in Tiger, but in Lake Oswego itself, there are not. This is, this is it. And what we have stored in our reservoirs scattered throughout town.
Any other questions? Commissioner Mercer, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further testimony, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so Commissioner Langston made the motion. It was seconded by Commissioner Volbida. Could I please have a roll call? Could I please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, public hearing is closed at 7:20 PM. Okay. Would you do any deliberation here?
I'm curious on wording for a potential conditional use like Heather was mentioning.
Yes.
I know wording is very important.
Yes, we need some assistance there because I think that is the optimal way we want to address this. This was some conditional.
Sure. So I think in addition to the construction management plan, special condition, we'll add a second special condition of approval that says. Operations period, when a generator is brought to the site for operations in an emergency situation. The operators will make every effort to obtain the smallest and least impactful unit. Available that can serve this site.
With filtration if available.
With filtration if available.
Yeah. Does anybody want to? I'd entertain a motion.
I mean, I wonder how necessary that is really.
It's, it, it sounds like it's the intent anyway, but it does give your constituent that you've heard them and that you're putting it in place. I think it.
I think it's important to put it in place.
And, and then if anyone ever.
How do you, how do you guys feel?
In 15 years and says, hey, you guys forgot this, you know, here it is. It's required.
Jacob, how do, Jacob, how do you feel about it?
I like it.
I, I like it. I would like, did we include and store it on the bridge if possible?
Do we need that?
I mean, I think if it's the sized. I don't know. Whatever you think.
Yeah, if it's that size, I'm, I'm sure they're going to want to protect it.
And have it on.
It sounds like the applicant isn't opposed to that, that they'll make the effort, that the first.
Did you have a comment, sir? Or you're just giving the thumbs up? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Okay. So Andrel, do you have any other? No questions? So. With everything that you said, if we say, you know, I'd like to make a motion with.
Yeah, I'm just going to take a quick moment and write it out and then I'll read it again. And you can say, if that works so that I make sure I. Get it correctly when I write the notice of decision when emergency generator. Is used on the site. Every effort. And I can look at this tape too, but this. Will be made. To obtain. The smallest.
And are you gentlemen, okay with the special conditions we'd like to list? You need, you need to come and speak up here and give your name. Thank you.
We've closed the public hearing.
Oh, sorry. We closed the hearing. I guess I can't hear it.
If you.
Thank you.
Reopen it again. You can do that.
I don't think we need to. Unless there's something imperative.
I, I would like to motion to reopen the public hearing so we can hear the comments from the city.
By an emergency.
Okay.
I'll second that. Okay.
Okay. So it looks like we have a motion here that we will, we would like to reopen the public hearing to hear his comments. And we reopened it at 7:25 PM.
Thank you for reopening and, and thank you for hearing my comment. My name is Stefan Broaddus. I am. The assistant city engineer for the city of Lake Oswego. And the question was, are there any objections from staff regarding this, these conditions? The only thing I would like to hear the, the final language that's come up because. Every effort to procure these types of, of things could be impractical due to timeline it takes to get something. So there may be a. A smaller generator that would be sufficient to power the equipment. But perhaps out of Texas or some, somewhere that's going to take two weeks to get there and it doesn't really fit our need. Or, or something smaller from a different vendor that is 10 times as expensive or something like that. So. I would like to hear the language, but as long as it's something along the lines of. You know, reasonable effort to procure this, the smallest generator with filtration, something along those lines. It gives us enough room to, to make practical decisions with that still being the intent of what we're trying to achieve. Absolutely. But just something that doesn't. Commit us to making poor economic decisions or logistical decisions on timeline, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Heather, you, did you take all that in where you're writing? Okay.
So here's, here's what I have. In an emergency, so that it is titled operation period in an emergency. When a generator is used, the site operators will obtain the smallest and least impactful unit that will provide emergency operational power to the site. So just you'll obtain the smallest and least impactful that's available. If you want to come back up and give me notes.
Again, for the record, Eric Eisenman. I think what, what, what the, what Mr. Broaddus was trying to get to is that. The condition as written might still require an unreasonable effort to get the smallest generator possible. From Texas or some other place, which might take several weeks to, to occur. So I think what we're looking for is that word reasonable effort to do this. Every effort requires every possible.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. I think though, if you guys were able to just. Present your, your findings and during that time, obviously. Everybody's going to be operating at, at. You know, in, in a, in a timely manner. So if you guys were, if you received a complaint and you said, well, yeah, we did. This, we could have waited three days for the small one, or I got, we got this one out there in 24 hours. I got, I believe everybody's going to understand. Legitimacy of that decision.
If I may, again, Eric Eisenman, I, I think it'd be reasonable, if you will. For the city of Lake Oswego to notify the city of Gladstone in a very timely manner. Of what's going to happen. And that would trigger your, your review of what, what might happen. And you would agree with that. A notification, yes.
Okay. So that notification would be to our public works department or to whom? That's a good question, isn't it?
Yeah, well, we do run emergency services also through our public works department. So that might be the only people who are around in an emergency.
Okay.
So then it's in an emergency, when a generator is used on the site, a reasonable effort will be made to obtain the smallest and least impactful unit that will provide emergency operational power to the site. In addition, notice will be provided to the city of Gladstone Public Works Department when this is in use. But which unit is in use?
And don't forget the filtration if available.
And filtration if available.
Yeah.
So it has reasonable effort. So that it's not every effort. It's reasonable. Do you guys have comments about it or?
Well, no, it's, we reopened it.
Oh yeah, sorry.
And, and, and I will need to reclose it here in a moment.
We don't have any objections to the use of reasonable efforts. Filtration.
Good.
Notification of public works, works in a timely manner. We don't object to that at all.
Wonderful.
Okay, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, Commissioner Wees made a motion to close the public hearing. It was seconded by Commissioner Volvoda. I'm trying to get it right. Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, the second reopening of the public hearing is closing now at 7:30. Okay.
I like it. Just as a reminder, you know, we're, we're reviewing the pads and the electrical, not the use of. Temporary emergency services. I think this additional conditional use wording. Puts in place that extra layer of protection. But again, that's, you know. That's out of our.
I like it.
Hands.
Yeah. I would entertain a motion if we're ready for.
I think just as you're doing that, that I really appreciate that comment from Commissioner Volbada because we want to link this condition to. The conditional use chapter of our code 17.70.
Yes.
Where in subsection two of 17.70010. Two does allow you to place additional conditions of approval requiring design features that minimize environmental impact such as noise, vibration, smoke, dust, fumes and glare. So this gets to that criterion. So we'll make sure that's clear in the planning commission notice of decision. If you choose to add this condition. And the condition will be operation period in an emergency when a generator is used on the site. A reasonable effort will be made to obtain the smallest and least impactful unit with filtration if available that will provide emergency power to the site. Operators will notify Gladstone Public Works that a generator is in use on the site in a reasonable timeframe. We're being very reasonable.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Mercero.
The one thing I didn't hear. And maybe was said. If. We lowered. The. Amount of the largest generator. Would that help anything?
And if it was a smaller generator, there'd be less noise, less impact to the residents. Am I saying that correctly?
That is my understanding.
Let me say again. If we said that the. Generator. Could only be such and such size of a cell within limits. Then we would have lots of a problem getting somebody sticking in a monstrous unit makes a hell of a lot of noise and exhaust.
Thank you, Heather. Go ahead.
May I respond? Thank you, Commissioner Mercero. That's a really good point. I think the issue we run into if we limit the size with a specific. Size level is that if that's not, if anything below that's not available in an emergency situation, then we're in a position where. No use of the site at all can occur per the agreement. And as Commissioner Volbada said. We're really just approving the electrical equipment rather than the generator itself, but this is sort of a. Courtesy condition that aligns with how the applicant would run the site anyway, and also falls into the conditional use purview. But I think if you were to limit the size of the generator with an absolute threshold, you could run into a problem where it's not used, usable.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Mercero?
I, I am not sure it has. And I, I'm leaving it open to the, to the commission here to think about it. If there's any opportunity to change things, make it better. If they've. Had more smaller units. Available. There would be less need for a larger unit.
It's my understanding from what they said. That they're going to be at the mercy of getting a generator via a rental. Is that correct? Okay. So if there's. An ice storm and everything shuts down like it did in 2021, they'll be at the mercy of what's available in order to get their pump station operational again. You're all nodding your head. I'm saying that correctly? Okay. So that's, that's the reason why we don't want to lock them in a box regarding size. They may not have a choice if there's an emergency.
I feel commissioners feel the same way. If there isn't a weather option, then I'm okay with that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner Mercero. I would entertain a motion if anyone wants to make one.
I'll make a motion to approve application CU-24-01 with the two. Conditional use, number one being the construction management plan, number two. For operations, making every reasonable effort to obtain the smallest and least impactful generator needed. To appropriately service the site and needs with filtration if available as written. By city staff with the notice to public works.
Nice job. I'll second that.
Commissioner Volvoda made the motion to approve and it was seconded by Commissioner Langston. Tammy, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, it is approved. Yay. You are welcome. Thank you very much for all the details and dealing with all of our questions. We just wanted to be fair and equitable to everyone. So thank you. Thank you. Again, to reiterate, public hearing DR-24-01. Has been postponed until April 16th. So we are going to move forward to, from business from the public. Do we have any?
I have not received any requests.
Okay. How about business from the planning commission? And I'll start with Jennifer.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. Jacob?
I just want to say thank you all for entertaining reopening. So we can hear the comments of the folks from our neighboring city. I think. We found a, a great solution there. And I want to thank you, Ms. Austin, for thinking of the. Additional condition. I was finding myself not seeing a great way forward to. I think serve the concerns of our constituents here and the needs of the group, but I think you found a really great solution. So thank you.
Here, here. Commissioner Langston.
I have no business tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Mercero, do you have any business to share with the commission?
All I wanted to say was today, the 19th was the first spring day and it was beautiful today.
Well, thank you very much. Commissioner Labonte.
Sure. Just in the business from the board in our last meeting, I had mentioned, brought up about the pedestrian path near the RC track in Melton Bar. I was told that from a park, an excited park member that that pedestrian path was cleaned up, which was great. As a testament to the issue there, if you go there. Last time I was there, about a week ago, the problem comes right back. As far as the mud on that path, it has to do with the erosion from the RC park. So great for cleaning up, but maybe a bigger solution maybe needs to happen there. And. Chairperson Smith, you wanted me to mention about the.
Please share with us what the meeting was about on, it was Tuesday, wasn't it?
Yeah, was it?
No, Monday.
Yeah.
I'm off on my days. I'm sorry.
2012, I think. No, it's just, just yesterday and good, good meeting. Of course, there are many different people there. So. But we discussed and, and really learned more about what the project is moving forward. I feel like we've been talking about downtown projects now forever. But this is a different incarnation of it, where a lot of the business owners kind of talking about very. Practical issues as far as, you know, issues with flooding from storm, from the roadway and storms and signage and beautification.
Commissioner Labonte, I'm going to interrupt for just a moment. Can you advise what you were talking about, what meeting you're talking about?
Sure. Yeah, that was yesterday, the stakeholder advisory committee Gladstone Town Center project.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. I'm sorry. And yeah, overall it was great to hear from different folks that are interested in the downtown district. A variety of conversations came up that we've. Had these types of conversations too with the planning commission, I think folks have. So it'll be. I'm very interested to see kind of what comes up from the, the committee and. That information will be presented officially to, to this board at some point in the future, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think the timeline had quite a few check-ins. Yeah, I think the, um, timeline had quite a few check-ins with planning commission, city council, giving you updates along the way. So. Yep. And a, and a public meeting scheduled sometime this summer that we're going to try to put a date to.
Uh, just a follow up question on that. What is the key deliverable? That's a plan of proposed changes to fit some of these needs that are
So the biggest deliverable is a geographic and, um, sized polygon for establishing what the town center is. And then within that polygon, it's updated development code, um, related to how things are built there. Transportation things and parking things and, um, and then
sidewalks and curbs and all that stuff.
Sure. All that stuff. Uh, trees was a big one that came up, um, really looking at the tree canopy and how we, um, make it a more habitable outdoor space in the summer. Um, and then comprehensive plan, um, updates too, to support the town center. Make sure that it's, um, complying with its state and metro regulations that we're, um, addressing with this project. So those will be put into the conference of plan as well. But yeah, it'll be, um, the downtown, um, plan in two thousand and seventeen. Um, it will build on that and the code changes, but the geographic area is going to change and the impact or the ability to apply more code changes will be more broad.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I think I'm the only one left and I don't have anything to add other than I greatly appreciate everyone coming so prepared for our, for our planning meetings. Um, I think we get a lot of work done in a, in a very reasonable short amount of time. So thank you, commissioners. It's greatly appreciated. On that note, I
Smith, before you go on, I just wanted to remind everyone of the April twenty-third Planning Commission joint work session with the city council.
Okay.
So that's just a reminder. And then also I wanted to make sure that everyone got their SEI reminder from the state.
I just received mine today.
And just a reminder that those are due on April fifteenth. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
No, thank you very much for that. Um, yeah. If you do it online, yeah. Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Volbada made the motion to adjourn the meeting and it was seconded by Commissioner Wees. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, meeting is adjourned at seven forty-three.